Good evening. Good evening. Is that working? Okay. Welcome to the September 3, 2024, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now, please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, number one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change, the removal of item number 13.
I'll make the motion as changed with item 13 removed.
Second.
Motion and second. No discussion, please vote.
Mayor, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arnz, Snorton, Webb, Claussen, Muren, abstaining, Hildebrand, motion carries.
Right. Then I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number 22 on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant, public works infrastructure in the amount of $480,000 for a pedestrian refuge island and the construction of a shared use path at Seventh Street and Highway 275. To kick off the discussion on this public hearing, we'll hear from Andrea Larson, who is representing Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Andrea.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Andrea Larson with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. And I am here, the public hearing states, "The city of Norfolk is requesting $480,000 in community development block grant funds for a public work infrastructure grant for a street and sidewalk improvement project, of which $450,000 will be used for the improvement of pedestrian facilities and provide safe crossing across Highway 275 at Seventh Streets by constructing a pedestrian refuge island on Highway 275 in Norfolk and constructing a new 10-foot wide shared use path along the east side of Seventh Street. The need for the crossing and path connection was identified through a recent survey by the Norfolk Parks Department, as well as a master sidewalk and bike path plan mapped out for the city by an outside consultant. The project will stretch from the center line of Highway 275 north 150 feet and south 150 feet, while extending east approximately 200 feet from south Seventh Street and also north from Highway 275, 1,250 feet to Michigan Avenue, and from Seventh Street 40 feet east. The total project area covers approximately 8,000 square yards. $5,000 will be used for construction management and $25,000 will be used for general administration of the grant. The city of Norfolk will provide $135,000 in matching funds for a total estimated project cost of $615,000. The proposed project will meet the national objective of limited clientele through the removal of architectural barriers. No persons will be displaced as a result of these activities."
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions for Andrea? Andrea, do you know the history? You know, when we think of CDBG, a lot of times we think of downtown revitalization, but grants like this, is there history in Norfolk in receiving these or do you know?
So generally, the city of Norfolk does not meet the national objective required for these public works grants. That requires the municipality's population to be at least 51% low to moderate income, and the city of Norfolk does not meet that threshold. However, there is a subcategory in that low to moderate income that is limited clientele, and that is to benefit your elderly and severely disabled populations. And since that subcategory is what would benefit from this project, we're able to apply for this public works because of that. But generally, no, we can't apply for these public works, streets and sidewalk projects.
Thank you. That's helpful. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item 23 and entertain a motion to consider Resolution Number 2024-50, approving a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant in the amount of $480,000 and authorizing the mayor and/or city staff to proceed with the formulation of any and all contract documents or other memoranda between the city of Norfolk and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development so as to effect acceptance of the grant.
I'll offer consideration of Resolution 2024-50.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion or comments on this, council? Just, Steve, I don't know if you want to comment on this, but just a little background, I think you've been involved in this as part of the Safe Streets For All process and the general effort to make pedestrian safety a priority on some of these major corridors and make connections throughout the city. So finding these available grant resources to help us do that is important. If there's anything you want to add to that.
I think you really hit most of it there. We've been working on this program for, oh, since early 2019 and getting our active transportation plan put together, and then over time, trying to identify grants we can go to to help build out that vision for the community. Certainly, the recent Safe Streets For All, and we haven't, we'll be rolling out the summary of the data gathering on that and the community survey, but these crossings on these five-lane major arterial sections of our community are a substantial issue, and a grant like this brings money to the table to help us meet the needs of the community, and certainly, again, those needs have been pointed out in the most recent survey again.
Okay. Thank you for that context. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2024-50 is adopted.
Brings us to our regular agenda, item 24. We look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Huff Construction, Nebraska Limited Liability Company, a South Dakota LLC, for the Johnson Park Improvements Bid Package One Sports Court and Splash Pad Project resulting in an increase of $10,308.
Josh, can I interrupt? Are we supposed to go to 13 first? What is that?
That was removed from.
Oh, it was just. Thank you.
I'll offer for consideration approval of change order number one with Huff Construction. Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Anna Allen, our Assistant City Engineer. Anna.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a change order for Huff Construction as part of our Johnson's Park project. We had broken it into several different bid packages based on the type of work that was going on there. With this, after the project was bid out, we decided to add a building for, that would provide a restroom and a warming area contention stand building. So with that building, we needed to extend the water and sewer to that restroom. So this is the cost for extending that water and sewer there, and then the other part of this is adding some drain tile underneath the fountain that was installed, just to make sure there is adequate drainage under that fountain.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Any questions?
This portion is also funded under the ARPA grant, just letting you know, these funds will come out of that grant.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Okay. Any discussion or public input on this? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 25, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5893 approving the foundry apartment complex final plan development. This ordinance passed on first reading at the August 19 city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5893.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, Val Grimes, our city planner, Val.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is the second reading, and this is the plan development for the apartments behind the restaurant there at Pazwalk and 275. Because number 13 was pulled off the consent agenda, I guess I would request that this be at second reading only because that's the easement that we're waiting on, so that we're just waiting on one more sign-off on that easement. So that should be to us before the end, before we put it on next time. So that would be my request, just to kind of keep this moving and yet not finalized until we get that easement.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Any questions on that? Any public input on this? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5893 carries on second reading.
Item 26, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5894 to allow all-terrain vehicles or ATVs on Norfolk city streets. This ordinance passed on first reading at the August 19 city council meeting.
I'll offer for consideration of ordinance number 5894. I'll second that.
Motion second. For some background on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator. Andy.
Sure, mayor, council, thank you. Well, we went through most of this at the first reading, so I'm not going to belabor everything through this, but essentially, this adds a definition for ATVs, which would be commonly referred to as a four-wheeler, into the same city code and under largely the same rules as you would for the UTVs, with the exception, if you look under H and I, under number, section 24-353.7, this is requiring of helmets on those unless they have a manufacturer-approved rollover cage and seating and things for drivers and passengers. So that would be the only difference you would see here, that varies from the UTV definition, and also, this code does then make it spell out specifically that we're prohibiting three-wheelers, three-wheeled vehicles as well in Norfolk city limits. So with that, I'd be happy to have any questions or if there's any other inquiries that have come up since first reading. This is the same ordinance that was presented the last time.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Any public input on this?
Mayor, city council. Kim Davis.
Good evening.
At the last meeting, I listened to everybody talking about ATVs and having them on public streets, and so I went home and did some research, and everything that I've read, and we're talking, the first, I don't know, 12, 13 pages on Google says absolutely not. It says that they are, they don't have the same safety equipment as cars and trucks, they have unpredictable handling, ATVs have low-pressure tire with knobby treads that can grab the road surface, causing loss of control in rollovers. Increased risk of collision, ATVs can be difficult to control on paved, excuse me, paved surfaces, with increases the risk of collision with other vehicles. They have a higher risk of injury, ATVs can tip over easily, throwing riders and passengers off or even rolling over on top of them. Just recently, there've been several or a couple people killed by ATVs rolling over in this area or from this area. I don't think it's a good idea, and another thing that I, the first thing I thought of when you guys were talking about it is Skyview Lake, you know, if we allow ATVs up there, you know they're going to go riding up those hills and it's going to tear them up. Just a thought, but they're not safe. They are not safe to be on public streets. They don't have the tire width to grab the concrete to keep them stable. So just my input.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I didn't do my research, I commend her for that. I use practical situations. This is ridiculous. Why? Why in the heck would you want a four-wheeler on the city streets? Side-by-sides, that's questionable, but a vehicle intended for off-road use only to be on a public street with vehicles, trucks, everything else is crazy. Going to require helmets, great, but that isn't it. These vehicles are not intended to be on city streets, period. Would you want your spouses, kids, grandkids on them riding on city streets with all the people we have and all the accidents we have right now? Guys better vote no on this, because this is flat wrong.
Can you say your name for the record?
I did. Didn't I say it? I bet everybody knows me. David Jansma.
Anyone else wish any comment? Okay. Any discussion, council, on this? Okay. No discussion.
Mayor and council, I just, it made me think and remember, I want to make sure that I mentioned that our public safety departments, both police and fire, you know, have worked to try to make this as safe as possible, if it is, but also want to be on the record that they are not in favor of allowing this on city streets. So I want to just be on the record for stating that for your benefit.
Thank you, Andy. I think that's helpful to add to the record. Any further discussion? I didn't say a whole lot a couple weeks ago, and it may not make any difference, but I do, there was a distinction here that I noticed between the discussion on UTVs and ATVs, and that's something that Andy just mentioned. Both of our public safety divisions have made the recommendations against this, where I don't, do not believe that was the case with our UTVs. To me, that means something. With that, if there's no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Chapter 24, Article 11 of the official city code to allow the operation of four-wheeled all-terrain vehicles on city streets and highways, and set forth the provisions under which said all-terrain vehicles may be operated, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Voting in favor, McCarthy and Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Granquist, Arnz, Snorton, Webb, Claussen, Muren. Ordinance number 5894 fails.
Item 27, we look for a motion to consider Resolution 2024-48 approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Granville Custom Homes Incorporated, Jan Anderson and David and Cindy Christopherson for properties located at 2200 North 26th Street, 2206 through 2218 North 26th Street, and Outlot C. This item was tabled at the August 19 council meeting. And I think with that, then we need first a motion to remove from the table.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2024-48 to be removed from the table.
Second.
Motion second to remove this item from the table, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Val, our, Val Grimes, our city planner, I'm going to ask for some background and a refresher on this discussion, please, and any new developments since.
Okay. Yeah, so this is a sidewalk waiver going up north 25th Street. These lots that we're looking at are either corner lots or are they, they are through lots, meaning they face 26th Street, but they, their rear yard backs to 25th Street. And so this waiver is requesting the 25th Street sidewalk not to be put in at this time due to reconstruction of 25th Street, hopefully coming in the next two to five years, would be my guess. And so that is the history of this and where we left off. We did have a subcommittee on this and came up with some potential ways in which to do a swap, but we're still working through that with Granville Homes, and I don't know if, Steve or Danny, you've had more conversations since then with them?
Yeah. So within our subdivision agreement with Granville Homes, they are required to put in an eight-foot trail on the north side of Sheridan, and then the city was going to reimburse them 35% of that cost of that trail to accommodate the extra width. What we've discussed is that rather than reimburse Granville for that 35% of the eight-foot trail is, he pays that and consumes that cost, and then in exchange, when we build out 25th Street going north, then we would, we, the city, then would consume the cost of that sidewalk. That was the conversation, as I recall, I think that was brought to subcommittee. We are still working through the most, what do I want to say? I guess the best solution to put that on paper and then move that forward and bring that to council for consideration, but as of now, I think we're requesting that this be retabled so that we can finish those conversations as staff and figure out the best way to put this, put this on paper and carry it forward.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Any questions about that, concerns from council? Okay. Then given that report, do I hear a motion to table?
Your honor, I'd make a motion to table Resolution 2024-48.
I'll second that.
Motion second to table, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 28, we look for a motion to consider approval for the request of funding for the Northeast Nebraska Regional Land Bank.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background, first on this, we'll hear from Land Bank Director Gary Brett Schneider.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Evening, Gary.
Just a brief update on this, as one of the things we discussed over the project process was to receive 50,000 of the council money there. We appreciate the money in the past, we're utilizing it wisely. At present, we have two properties that have been donated. The first property should go, demo should be done this week at the one at 110 South Ninth, and then we have our second property at 210 North Ninth, which has been, done the asbestos, they have a little bit of asbestos to remove. We're going to try to allow fire and police to train in there for a few weeks before we do demo, unless demo from South Ninth moves quick and goes right over there. I don't want to slow it down while the process is in town either, but, and we're utilizing the money wisely. Our first one had a lot of asbestos, and this last one was very little, so we're learning lessons as we go through this process on what houses have and can have in the community. But it's been very productive. We have a lot of individuals that are interested in continuing to donate property towards this process. There are numerous homes that need to be addressed, and we're trying to continue to do that. Any questions, I'll try to answer for you. We do thank you for all the support you've given us.
Gary, you mentioned work on two properties. Are those two properties the entirety of the property that the land bank owns and controls right now?
Owns at the present time. We own two properties presently.
Yeah.
Right. And we have visited with Jeff at Madison County to go over the process with them. We haven't, he's just bringing himself up to speed on how that will work. As the process is, we would receive half of the taxes for five years once it comes back on the tax roll, which brings money back into the land bank.
Are you seeing that as become, as people become more aware with this program, there's more interest? You're feeling more inquiries about donations and how that works?
There's a lot more interest in it. Knowing the fact that the goal and the mission is to go back and put a low-to-moderate income family home back on there, affordable home, that is, those people donating like that thought. It's getting something back into the neighborhood. Now, they're not always proud of the house they had that got ran down, but they like the fact that if we can put something back on top of it, which will probably come this spring, we'll have some going into it, so, some being built back.
That was the goal from the beginning, correct?
Right. That is it.
Yeah.
Infill, get those filled in.
Exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or public input on this? Counsel discussion? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 29, we look for a motion to consider approval of a limited English proficiency plan for the city of Norfolk as it relates to the needs of individuals with limited English language skills. This item was postponed to September 3 at the June 17 city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of a limited English proficiency plan. Apparently, I need it right now.
Second.
Motion and second. Jessica Tavorick, our city human resources director, give us some background on this, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. I understand that this was tabled a couple times, and I'm just requesting that we table it again until September 16 meeting. I'm working with, again, the Nebraska Organizing Project to kind of fine-tune this document, and we will for sure be ready by that meeting. So any questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Based on that conversation, I'll make a motion to table. Second.
Motion second to table, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 30, we look for a motion to consider approval of a professional services contract with Merge for the schematic design and structural engineering of the Riverpoint District Gateway Sign in downtown Norfolk for the amount of $34,500.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Motion and second. For some background on this, our city's economic development director, Candace Alder. Candace.
Good evening. You have in front of you an agreement with Merge for the development of the design and structural engineering of... structural engineering of the proposed gateway signage. That's a part of the CCCFF grant that we received for downtown Norfolk. This, again, is that $1,125,000 that we received in civic and community center financing funds because of our designation as a creative district. So, in addition to the lighting activities, a nice gateway sign that will span over the street is included in it. This meets the budget of $34,500 that we had in our grant application and our budget, and will get us going. The Merge is who we have worked with over the years as we've transitioned our signage around town, so it made a lot of sense to go with them for this, and they're proposing to bring three to four concepts forward where we've landed on, and will be using Riverpoint District is what the VPD and the Creative District has proposed we look at for those concept designs. And then we'll be bringing those concepts to the vehicle parking district, and in conjunction with that, be inviting the members of the Creative District to participate in those meetings with Merge. So I would answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Candace. Any questions?
Just curious, where was this plan to go up at?
We're proposing to put it up in the Eighth Street and Norfolk Avenue area.
Have you talked to those businesses, Candace?
No. We had, kind of went back and forth, and we're not exactly sure where it will land, but that'll be a part of the discussions with Merge is that, that location analysis.
Candace, as you mentioned, we've worked with, Merge has done our wayfinding signage plan. So some of the signs that you see at the parks, the park signage that was designed as part of wayfinding with Merge, correct? Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Any public comment or input on this? Okay, seeing and hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. McCarthy, Granquist, Arns, Snorton, Hildebrand, Clausen, Murin. Voting in opposition, Webb. Motion carries.
Item 31, we'd look for a motion to consider Resolution number 2024-51 to approve a grant application to the Recreation Trails Program of the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission in the amount of $250,000 to complete a parking lot, add a restroom, and improve the river
I'll make a motion for consideration of Resolution 2024-51.
Second.
Motion second for background on this, Nate Power, Parks and Recs Director.
Mayor and council, thank you. Before you, his request to apply for the RTP grant with Nebraska Game and Parks, and this is for East Bluff Park improvements. These are grant funds available to improve trails, and that also includes trailheads. This is a trailhead to our flood control trail system out on the flood control. It also is the takeout for the river, which also includes river trails as well as part of this grant application. My request is install a parking lot and add a restroom and improve the takeout with ADA access at East Bluff Park. This is an 80/20 grant match, meaning the city needs 20% matching grant. We did amend city code to create East Bluff Park back on June 3rd, and we also saw the demand for parking that rise quickly after opening the water park on June 8th. We created temporary parking after about a month into operating the river. So we'd like to make these improvements sooner and rather than later, as we have such high demand there. The total project amount is $321,166.08. The grant is $250,000. That's their max allowable, and the match would be $71,166.08. Funds would come from the Kino dollars, and that would require us to move a trail project back a year or two as we complete this project ahead of that one. So this is a request to apply for the grant by resolution, and staff recommends submitting an application for East Bluff Park trailhead improvements.
Thank you, Nate. When is the grant application deadline for this one?
On September 6th.
Nate, how many parking stalls?
This would be about 20, just under 25 parking stalls.
And, as you mentioned, this was park space that was established as part of that development, and there's been plans for park area to be put in there for some time. So this potentially could kickstart that, that project as well.
And as part of the design process, we would have a place for a playground and some other amenities as the park would, 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 what you would want in a community park.
Okay. Thank you.
You said this is a Kino fund request, then?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, but the, the availability of those funds won't be available for two years, right?
No, those, those funds are available next year. The Northwestern and First Street to Omaha Trail funds, we would get moved back a year or two.
Oh, you'd move that one back?
We'd move that one back. Move this one up? If we're awarded. This is just to apply.
Yeah, right. I got you. Okay.
Thank you, Nate. Any other questions? All right. Any other, any public input or comment on this? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2024-51 is adopted.
Last but not least, item 32, we'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5895 amending Section 2-5 of the Official City Code to include fees for exceeding industrial waste permit amounts and to amend Section 26-56 to add definitions for TSS and TKN.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5895.
Second.
Motion and second for some background on this, Steve Remus, Public Works Director. Steve?
Mayor and council, what's in front of you is a, is a new fee that would be added for our industrial clients. We have permits with all of our significant industries, and within those permits, we define what they're allowed to send us on a monthly, daily basis, monthly basis, for biological oxygen demand, total suspended solids, and total kilogram nitrogen. What we see is the user fees and those don't really offer much incentive for them to stop once they reach that industrial limit that we set in their permit. This type of a fee to charge, if they go over that permit, is pretty common. It just, it provides a mechanism for them to pause and make decisions around whether they really want to exceed that and pay this additional fee. The fee is a daily fee, so when they exceed those permit limits, that fee kicks in on a daily basis. I would say, based on the industrial growth that we're seeing, and the, you know, it's, it makes sense that we add this as a, as an additional cost capture for, for costs associated with the treatment of those higher industrial users, so I'd answer any questions you would have around that.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
It's supposed to be $1,000 per day, Steve's orders.
That's correct.
Steve, when's the last time these industrial fees have been updated or reformed?
We, we try to evaluate those fees on an annual basis. Historically, we have increased our BOD, TSS, and TKN fees on an annual basis. Back in 2017-ish, 2018, we weren't increasing these for two, oh, no, three, four years. Last year and this year, we are increasing those and would anticipate that as we increase our regular residential user fees, we would be increasing our industrial user fees annually at the same rate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any public comment or input on this?
Jim McKenzie, I guess my question would be, when you have the fee defined as a specific dollar amount, if, if the specific customer were to go over the limit by a significant amount, which can cause damage to our water push and control plant, shut it down, require some significant remediation on the part of the city, is there a mechanism to charge that customer the cost to the city to remediate that problem? My, my point is, if it's a $1,000 fee, but it's cheaper for them rather than truck the waste away just to dump it on us, and it costs us a tremendous amount to recover from that, should there be some verbiage in there that it would be the greater of, the cost to the city to remediate the, the damage or the $1,000 or $2,500?
So we, within our, within our city code, we have the ability, if we see that they're moving above that, you know, we don't necessarily have eyes watching that on a daily basis. We test, we do COD testing on a daily basis to, to look at what, what their load was the prior day, and then we do BOD testing two or three times a week just to verify that our COD calculation is correct. But you really can't see it live. You can't, it's not, it's not something that you can see live, so you don't know what they're doing. Now, they're all, they're all working to try and stay within that, that limit that we give them within their permit, but they still, you know, they'll still push beyond that. If there was to be a complication related to what we would call a slug load or heavy load, again, yes, we have the ability by city code to go in there and recapture any additional cost to the city as a result of those heavy loads.
That is in our current city code?
That's correct.
Okay.
It just, this is a very specific dollar that says if you go over on a daily basis, if you've got 5,000 pounds is what your daily allowance is for BOD, and you hit 5,500 that day, yeah, you're gonna pay your load fees plus $1,000.
Okay. Does this somehow conflict with current code, since you're putting a specific dollar amount here, but other code issues?
No, it does not.
Okay.
It complements our city code very well, and again, this is, this is a common practice just to give some incentive, it's just a little, another little incentive there to help, help them manage their load a little bit better than, than they might without it. I would say, without going back and looking at any one particular, in a 30-day period, an industry may exceed their load two or three times, you know, in that monthly period. The other thing we're doing, you know, just around that, is, is we're looking specifically, you know, with the milk specialties expansion here, we are restructuring their, their loading fee within that to a tiered structure so that as they use more, they pay more, and we'll be taking that, we started to have some conversation with other industries, letting them know that we're gonna be approaching them with that same concept, so, again, just to, we're trying to put more mechanisms in place to help, help pay for the load that they're sending us, and to provide some incentive of load control.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 2-5 of the Official City Code to include fees for exceeding industrial waste permit amounts, to amend Section 26-56 to add definitions for TSS and TKN, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5895 carries on first reading.
Seeing the opposition, could we suspend the rules of second and third?
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5895 carries on second and third.
Okay, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.
Yeah, that house at 411, so I gave him into our office yesterday, and he said...